Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending the January 21th Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting this evening. At this time, I'd like to call on the Reverend Spotswood Graves for an invocation. Reverend?
Let us pray. High King of the universe, source of truth, hope, and justice, this day we come before you as we speed through space on the earth, our home speeding through space on our annual journey around the sun which warms us making our life possible, as we begin the 150th year as Dare County, North Carolina, as we observe and remember the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., as we gather in this place to do the people's business, as we listen for news of decisions in our nation's capital, as we each live and breathe, we are in awe that you sustain all of your creation and also know the hopes and dreams of each one of us. Thanks we offer for persons who serve the public interest, looking beyond themselves to serve others. We thank you for public servants, our commissioners who meet here and also between meetings meet to see to our common affairs. We lift up our nation, our state and our county, our president, governor, and chairman of the Board of Commissioners. Guide them and those who serve with them in every good way. Give them wisdom and compassion, support them with our prayers. We thank you for persons who bring reports of works done. Thank you for systems of oversight and responsibility, calling all to more faithful work. Thank you for people who do good not because it is required or will be recognized, but because you have put the spirit of service within their hearts. We lift up the hurting among us, the misunderstood, the ignored, the unjustly judged. Hasten the day when all will be judged by the content of their character, and everyone will be able to say, "Free at last, free at last." Thank God almighty, free at last. And the prayers we offer in silence in this moment now, we bring to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Graves. May we stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which we stand, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
County manager?
Chairman, item one on the agenda is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. Just have a few items this evening. Like to just let you know that the Public Information Officer, Dorothy Hester, and myself traveled to Elizabeth City earlier last week and made the COA presentation to the Foundation Board, the COA Foundation that I've been doing throughout the last year promoting COA and what we're doing in Manio with COA and our scholarships. And so I've had a great meeting with their Foundation Board, and I'm happy to report that they have grown their scholarship funding now. There are now 140 scholarships that the COA Foundation issues annually. So that's very, very encouraging. That's up from like 104 the previous year. So that's a considerable number of additional scholarships that they're awarding. So that's very, very encouraging. Also, last week, had the opportunity along with Commissioner Ross to attend the School Board, Board of Education meeting. Those meetings that they have in the different facilities and the awards that they give out, very, very impressive to see those awards that those kids get and those teachers get on a monthly basis. And really had a very uplifting session with the Spanish program where they're teaching the kindergartens. That was really, really exciting to see. Most of you are aware, last week, we had the State of the County, and I presented that at a breakfast. I'm excited to announce that I will do that presentation once again in the coming weeks, hopefully in the next two weeks, to our citizens on Hatteras Island. It's difficult to ask them, those folks on Hatteras Island, to try to make that trip up here to make an eight o'clock breakfast meeting. So I look forward to making that presentation on Hatteras Island in the coming weeks. The county manager and myself had a very, very exciting meeting with the town of Manio with respects to COA and what we are attempting to do here in Manio. The architect was here to make some recommendations, show some options with respects to the look of what the facility may look like. And as most of you are aware, we're trying to stay away from the typical government look, brick building with some glass and quite a bit of modern look to it, and they were all very, very, very receptive to that. So I was very excited to hear their Board of Commissioners approve that. So we're moving forward with that. Unfortunately, I was not able to, for the first time in a number of years, to make the Martin Luther King, the 29th celebration here in Dare that the Lewis family has put on. My wife's uncle passed away, and we had to be in Virginia Beach for that Saturday, for that funeral. But I understand Reverend Graves, it was a very, very uplifting service and once again. So I'm happy that that was another success this year in a good turnout, from what I With that being said, I've got one presentation that I'll come down front and do. How's everybody this evening? You dressed comfortably with this cold weather we're having out here? Matt, is this thing? There we go. I gotta hold it closer. I don't know. A little cold weather. We had a little bit of snow this weekend. I had to break open my snow shovel, Reverend Graves, to get all that snow off my deck.
Ran out of bread.
Ran out of red milk.
Run out of grocery stores.
In a field of endeavor, 100 years is quite a long time, I would say. It's an important landmark. Today, it's my honor to recognize someone who has certainly achieved this milestone in their life. Reverend Pitch is now celebrating 100 years. I had the honor of attending a breakfast this past Thursday at the Jolly Roger Restaurant, where Reverend Pitch, for over 25 years, has had a group that they come and have breakfast. And it's a non-denominational service, and they have a nice lesson every Thursday morning. So I had the privilege of attending that for the first time this past Thursday, and I thoroughly enjoyed that. You know, what an amazing career Reverend Pitch has had. It's not about the 100 years, but it's about what he has accomplished in those 100 years. His life has been one of service. Many of our community know him as the former pastor of the Collington United Methodist Church, even know him as someone who has a passionate voice and a tireless advocate for the forgotten in our community. I can remember the first time I met Reverend Pitch. My wife and I were part of the Kill Devil Hills Fire Department Auxiliary. We were members of that for a number of years. And the first time I met Reverend Pitch, I went up, and as most of you know, he has a pretty firm handshake. And I reached out and shook his hand, and I thought my finger was gonna crush because of this ring that I had on it, Reverend Pitch. So for 25 years after that, every time I'd see Reverend Pitch, the first thing I'd do is I'd pull this ring off my hand, stick it on his hand right here, and I'd stick my hand out. But he has a firm handshake, and I love that about him. He wants you to know that you're there and you're in his presence, and he appreciates that. But I had to tell that little story on you, Reverend Pitch. But my wife and I had that privilege of working with him on the Kill Devil Hills Fire Department Auxiliary for a number of years, and he was chaplain as well, and he gave many, many days of his time and service to that. Every community needs someone like Reverend Pitch, men and women with that type of integrity. Today, it's my honor, on behalf of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, Reverend Pitch, to honor you as a true faithful moral compass in our community. And I'd like to ask you, if you could, if you'd come forward now, if you wouldn't mind. Reverend Pitch, I have a certificate of appreciation to present to you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. The Dare County Board of Commissioners awards this certificate to Reverend Bob Pitch in grateful recognition for your complimentary service to the people of Dare County, whether in the pulpit, I can't even read here, whether in the pulpit, whether ministering to the sick, or in the community meetings, Reverend Pitch has consistently provided spiritual leadership and insightful guidance. The Dare County Board of Commissioners salute you, Reverend Pitch, for your lifetime of service to others and for your unique role in being a moral beacon and compass in our community. And it's our honor to present to you, see you, Reverend Pitch. Let's get up. Thank you.
Dorothy, can we get the daughters, too?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Come on up here. Come on up here. Reverend Pitch, would you like to say a few words?
I am 100 years of existence, but I'm not smarter.
I hear you. Well, let me just tell you something. I was there Thursday, and your man is as sharp as it ever was, Reverend Pitch, trust me. God bless you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Greatest generation.
That's for sure.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. County manager?
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda. Item two is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this evening, please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that comes on when your time begins. A yellow light will come on when you're about a minute up, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. I have two on the sign-up sheet. The first one is Rob Rollison.
Rob, welcome this evening.
Well, thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Reverend Pitch, it's awesome to see you. It's been quite some time since you stopped by the office back in the day when Mom was mayor. I remember you coming in, and it was always, when I saw you walking through the parking lot, I always got a smile on my face. It was so good to see you. Since the election in Virginia in November, I think we've seen some pretty ugly things going on with regards to the Second Amendment. And the reaction in Virginia is that many jurisdictions declared themselves a Second Amendment sanctuary, and we're seeing that movement spread to North Carolina. So far, 11 North Carolina counties have affirmed their intent to protect the citizens' rights. And many folks here in Dare County enjoy exercising their right to keep and bear arms. All you have to do is go over to the shooting complex on the weekend, and you'll see plenty of people using pistol, rifle, small bore, sporting clays, and occasionally the Class III weapons will be out there. If you go on Sunday, you'll see the kids from First Flight Manio Shooting Teams. And trust me, don't challenge those guys. They will make you look a fool out there shooting their skeet. A few Saturdays ago, even saw Commissioner Overman out there, and he's pretty good with his AR, so y'all be advised of that. Our county has folks who keep and bear arms for personal defense. And there are plenty of citizens here who enjoy hunting, and we even have some folks who supplement their income in the wintertime by guide and duck hunts. And we've got folks that come down here from other localities to hunt P. Island. And here in Nag's Head at the Wildlife Refuge, you'll see them parked along the side of the road. And those folks, they come here and they rent hotel rooms and they spend money in a restaurant. So it might not be like the summertime, but at least it's a little bump, you know? And we can use every bump we can in the wintertime. There's a concerted effort to weaken our Second Amendment rights, but what we saw yesterday in Virginia was a peaceful demonstration, and there were lots of folks there, and there were lots of firearms there. So I think what we have is more of a people problem than a gun problem, and criminal misuse of firearms should not erode the rights of law-abiding citizens. And I have a model resolution, if you guys would take a look at it, so maybe you could get it on your agenda for the next meeting, to declare Dare County a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, if you'll share that with the county manager.
Sure.
Next is Spotswood Graves.
Spotswood, welcome back again.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. I hope I can see my notes here. This past Saturday, I was here last month, your last meeting, to speak about the Dr. Martin Luther King observance that took place on last Saturday at the Dare Center right behind the building here. Probably in the 25 years that I've been a part of it, probably the most well-attended one we've ever had. We had between 150 and 200 persons there this year. We had Commissioner Bateman was there, the ones that I saw, Mayor Ben McCahoon of Nag's Head, town of Nag's Head, and Commissioner Betty Selby of Manio was present.
Commissioner House was there, too.
Mr. Houseman was also here. I'm sorry I didn't see you there.
I was standing right next to you.
It was a thrilling time. Also, Mr. John Buford, the conductor, music leader of the First Flight High School Senior Band, brought his senior chorus there. About 25 to 30 young people sang marvelously well. Also, we had a trio from Windale, North Carolina, The Voices of Truth, who were just awesome, and also The Echoes of Heritage, that have sung for many times in events here in Manio and throughout the county. Afterwards, we had dinner, as we always had, and it was just a pleasant hum in the place. This was the 29th observance. Bob Pitch, I think, has been to all of them except this one, and has been a faithful sponsor with a number of other people of this event. Mrs. Ruth Lewis and Clarence Lewis continued this for years and years. I remember, I named Ruth first because I'm sure she's the power behind that thing. I'm sure of that. It continues on because their son, Michael, who lives in Ghana, North Carolina, has become chairman of it, and he and I worked together with a number of other people to put this together this year. Every year at the end of this event, there's always something missing for me. And what is missing is that there is no way that we continue conversations along Dr. King's dream and along just understanding each other better across these matters. And I am hoping to have a venue where people who are interested in getting to know strangers can gather just to share our lives, to hear some of our stories. I have come to know Mr. and Mrs. Lewis and members of their family because we have worked together in this Dr. Martin Luther King observance. And I believe that it's as we get to know each other as individuals, not because you support this event or this cause, or you're coming because you are against something, but just because we gather together to become closer neighbors here in Dare County. I've had the privilege for a number of years of going to Edenton. Edenton, five years ago, had an event, and from that event, there is a biracial group that meets every Thursday night, from 30 to 60 people, just getting to know each other. In the last two years, we've dealt with the, society's been dealing with Confederate monuments, monuments commemorating different aspects of the Civil War. The town manager and the mayor of Manio, of Edenton, asked to come to that group to get their views on what to do about those monuments in Edenton. I would hope that we could continue conversations of getting to know each other so that we meet neighbors when we see each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spotswood. Is there other public comment this evening? Anyone else here for public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
My name is George Carver, the Executive Director of Dare Minority Coalition. Invest in yourself by investing in our communities so we can better afford accessible housing and also be a strong asset to those that need it. That's our mission statement. In the past few years, I've been working diligently on trying to provide accessible housing. Come December of this past year, we were so close to actually getting property on a contract on the north end of the island. Well, unfortunately, the 30-some acres airport on Culpeper Road didn't meet the standards as far as like the low-income house tax credit. So that had to be scratched. And we was looking at other properties, though, Manio as well, and one off California Road, 19 acres. That was so close to being under contract, it's unfathomable, to be honest. But come to find out, this is like .2 miles away from the water treatment plant. So any property in that area will not work. With that being said, Dare Minority Coalition have two partners who actually backed them as far as like getting property developed for accessible housing, as Commissioner, what do we say, essential housing. So there's one other piece of property that possibly could work, but unfortunately, it wouldn't, I'm saying, meet the deadline by the 24th of this week to actually apply for certain credits to low-income house tax credits for North Carolina. And the property itself was kinda expensive, as far as like 1.5 million. And our developers was willing to put up .700,000, if I'm not mistaken. And with that being said, my partner's willing to, well, we actually signed an MOU, and I also have one for Dare County as well to actually show their support with Dare Minority Coalition. So y'all can put this on the next agenda, and I guess get back with Dare Minority Coalition if y'all decide to support our efforts. And our developers also have a proposal as well, if y'all are willing to work together as far as working with UNC government, I'm saying that as y'all have under contract as well, to work with us. And there's property that's, like we said, we've been looking at, like right across the street from here, behind CVS, and right next to this piece of property. I know the county has property like radiation to it. So if things can work out, I'm saying, all properties adding up to around eight acres could be, I'm saying, more official to getting accessible housing, over 84 units done. But like I said, I have a memorandum of understanding for the county to look at if...
There's only one copy. Thank you.
So now that DMC have experienced developers backing them, now we're able to apply for more state and federal funds to actually help y'all guys' efforts too, as far as like getting essential and accessible housing done in Dare County. So if y'all, please look over the MOU that I provided for you guys, and hopefully make it to the next agenda, and at least have an outcome come from that. And I also would like to say thank you for appointing me to the Board of Transportation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carver.
Other public comment this evening? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Michelle Lewis. I am actually the daughter of Clarence and Ruth Lewis. And I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of, I don't operate as a part of the board for the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration, but I would like to say thank you to the county commissioners and elected officials and to the people of Dare County who have continually supported the Martin Luther King program, even in the years where numbers have dipped and numbers have gone up. And so just thank you for your continued support. I think initially when kind of my parents took over the program, the program actually started at Haven Creek Missionary Baptist Church, and the church decided it was unsustainable for them to continue doing it, just with the cost associated with it. And so, and it actually was my mother kind of the driving force behind it, said, you know, we've got to do something to continue to honor the legacy of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And for a period of time, I was a federal law enforcement officer, and I actually worked at the Martin Luther King Jr. site. And so what I can say about having been involved in numerous programs at the Martin Luther King site, and their birthday celebrations, and the one that's done here in Manio, is on a smaller scale, but definitely something that I think really does speak to the legacy of Dr. King. You know, sometimes when we... You know, sometimes when we show up for programs here in Dare County, and not just Dare County, but places across the country, people self-segregate, right? You know, self-segregate, maybe it's according to age, or gender, or race, or economics, right? All the things that divide us that we don't always talk about. But the Martin Luther King Program is one of those places where people do come together, where people do come together. And so I just want to celebrate the work that you all are doing and have done to help bring the community together in celebrating the work of the program, because I think it's something that anyone could come to from any place in the country and from the Martin Luther King site, and say, wow, this is a really good thing that this community is doing and that this community is a part of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Other public comment this evening? Anyone else like to speak in public comment? Is there any public comment? Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
Mr. Chairman, we will close the public comment and move to item three on the agenda. And Kay White and Sue Kelly are here to give us an update from the Senior Tar Heel Legislature.
Good evening, Kay, and welcome.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to be with you and report on the activities of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature in the past year. I have with me Sue Kelly, who you appointed as my alternate to replace Mary Ellen Hawthorne, and she's going to be a great person to work with me in the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, and she's going to tell you a little bit about her background when she speaks right after me. It's my pleasure, of course, to serve you all and the Dare County citizens. The sole purpose of the legislature is to be advocates for the older residents of North Carolina and particularly Dare County. This is my 10th year serving as your delegate. In 2018, the Senior Tar Heel Legislature celebrated its 25th anniversary. It was created by the North Carolina General Assembly with the passage of Senate Bill 479 in July of 1993. And each county serves with one delegate and one alternate. As your Senior Tar Heel Representatives in Dare County, Sue and I also advocate locally for our senior citizens by attending meetings and events such as the Community Coordinating Council, the dementia task force which I serve on, and we meet with senior citizens at the Dare Center and the Baum Center to learn what their needs are and how we might assist them in getting them met. We are available to talk with seniors at any time and to individually assist them and to assess services that they might need. We are here today to give you a very brief overview of our three meetings in 2019, and then answer any questions you may have. The priorities we are advocating in the General Assembly for 2020 are in your board packets, and we will list them for you later. I attended all three meetings in March, June, and October. Sue joined me for the June meeting after she was appointed. Following each meeting, I will send you a copy via the press release that details the issues presented and discussed. We spent day two of the March meeting at the General Assembly and had wonderful meetings with Senator Steinberg and representing Hanning, presenting our priorities and seeking their support. We spoke almost an hour with Reverend, sorry, Spotswood, with Senator Steinberg, and he was very supportive. One day, on day one, we heard from the Director of the Division of Aging and Adult Services and two directors from AARP, along with a presentation by Roger Manas, Chair of the Governor's Advisory Council on Aging. At that meeting, they honored me with a certificate for my six years serving as President of the Friends of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature, the nonprofit fundraising arm of the Senior Tar Heel Legislature. In June, we were updated by Joyce Massey Smith, Director, Division of Aging and Adult Services for the Department of Health and Human Services, that two of our priorities were in the proposed budget. The increase for the Home Community Care Block Grant and additional funds would be provided to the Adult Protective Services. Bill Lamb, Executive Director of Friends of the Residents of Long-Term Care, explained the mission of that organization and talked about the rules related to long-term care that were under review. Other speakers included Ed Rosenberg, talking about his reflections on a retiring gerontologist. Day two, we heard from the State Board of Elections addressing current issues in the area of voting, and Rebecca Freeman, Healthy Aging Specialist, DHHS, talked to us about the importance of senior centers in combating the problem of social isolation and loneliness for seniors. The average age of those active in our senior centers is 72 and 1/2 years. In October, new offices are elected every two years, and for the next two-year period, the office elected was David Boone, from our own Region R in Pasquotank County, was elected Speaker Pro Tem, Annette Myers, Granville County, Deputy Speaker Pro Tem, and Sherri Perry from Madison County as Secretary. After hearing from various speakers, we spent the afternoon in committee meetings preparing for legislative issues for this year and next. At meetings this year, we developed new priorities for the 2021 General Assembly, and in those meetings, I chaired the General Legislation Committee. Among key actions that the General Assembly has taken on our recommendations include expanded Medicaid coverage to older and disabled adults eligible for supplemental security income and to those with income up to 100% of the federal poverty level. They have increased funding for home and community-based services, which allow aging persons to remain in their homes instead of going into long-term care facilities. For the 2017 and 18 state expenditures for clients, 60-plus report Medicaid paid more than 1.4 billion for over 50,000 seniors living in nursing homes. And other things that have happened, they've increased the Homestead Property Tax Exemption. They began a prescription drug assistance program. They passed legislations to require criminal background checks for employees in adult care, nursing homes, and home care agencies. Appropriated funding for the support of the area agencies on aging. Expanded funding to improve the timeliness of complaint investigations and monitoring in long-term care facilities. They have also increased funding to expand adult protective services in the state. Passed regulations that required nursing homes to do drug testing on applicants for employment. They have passed legislation to increase consumer protection in the areas of telemarketing fraud and predatory lending. Provided funding to ensure the continuation of Project Care, that stands for caregiver alternatives to running on empty. We are asking that additional funding be provided to pay the caregivers for respite care. Right now, we have three employees across the state that manage this program, but we don't have very much funding to give back to the caregivers so they can have some respite care. Yes?
Kay, I'm particularly interested in this one, as you know. Do we know the amount of funding? Because the printed, you know, the legislative position requests funding increased by 500,000 from, do you know what the current funding amount is that we would...
For which one?
Care.
For Project Care.
Yes.
I believe we had the back of sheet. Yeah. Thank you.
I'm just trying to get a feel for, are we asking them to double it? Is it...
Total appropriation in, it went from 2014, there was a federal program that started the program in four counties, and it was only 214,000 at that time. And that was in 2014. And at the end of that three-year program, they suggested that it go statewide. And so in the total appropriation in 2018 is 1 million.
For the state of North Carolina.
Correct. And in case management, they expected to serve 800 people, and in respite care, they had 650 anticipated. That was for the offices and for distribution of some stipends, or, you know, to people as they need respite care for their loved one.
Okay.
Does that help? And going on to the other things that have been passed in the General Assembly, actually, that was the last one that I was going to go on to say, as you are aware, all of you are aware, the aging population in the country, and especially in North Carolina, is growing, and yet the funding for programs has not kept up with the need. North Carolina ranks ninth nationally, both in total population and in the number of people over 65. Only five years from now, 1 in 5 North Carolinians will be 65 and older. In 2019, the state had more people, the state, Dare County doesn't quite meet this yet, but the state had more people over 60 than those under 18 years old. By only 15 years from now, the projected growth of the 70- to 80-year-olds will be 100%, and those over 85, 111%, creating huge challenges for long-term care services and support. At this time, Sue will talk to you about the priorities that are before the General Assembly, and then we'll ask it, we'll answer other questions you may have. Thank you, Sue, for having this.
Sue, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commissioners, my name is Sue Kelly. I am a resident of Kill Devil Hills in Dare County. And I'm really, I want to thank you for appointing me to this position as an alternate. I've always been interested in legislative affairs since I was a teenager. I was a lobbyist in Virginia in my work for many years. And I also am really enjoying working with Kay. Wonderful person and lovely to spend time with. I also want to say quickly that I'm happy to be more involved in the county. I've been pretty active in Kill Devil Hills for a while, haven't done so much with the county, and I'm pleased to be involved. So thank you for letting us be here to share this with you. The legislative priorities that are with, being proposed by the North Carolina Senior Tar Heel Legislature, first of all, increased funding for the Home and Community Care Block Grants. This is just another way to provide home-based services for folks. There are approximately 11,000 citizens that are currently wait-listed for services that could come under this grant. The Senior Tar Heel Legislature requests the General Assembly to increase the Home and Community Care Block Grant funding by $7 million in recurring funds. Another item on this legislative list is maintain and increase funding for the senior centers. I'm one who really gets a lot of use out of the senior centers, and I think we all know how important they are. There are 171 senior centers in 97 counties. Yes, sir?
Thank you for this. I'm, again, kind of in my same line of questioning. As I read through it, the increase for the block grant, increased funding by 7 million, to help with context again, do we know that it's off of a base funding of X, and we'd like it to go to 7, and the, or go up by 7 million? I'm trying to get a feel for, is it currently 7? Are we asking them to double it? Is it currently 107, and we're asking for a 5% increase?
It's currently more than 7.
No, I understand. I just don't know what that is.
What the percentage increase is?
Yes.
Well, according to this document, and I'm very new to this, sir, so Kay may have to speak up if I don't know or have made some error, but it says the current funding for the Home and Community Care Block Grant, state funding, 31 million and some, federal funding, almost 29 million, required local match, 7 million, and that is 10% of the total.
So we would ask the state to increase it by 7?
Yes, sir.
But the state's portion is much smaller than the 70 total, so the state would actually be rising close to 30%?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I'm not challenging you, I'm just wondering if that's being met with any receptiveness or pushback? Have, do we know? What's that, Kay?
It is being met this year. In the proposed budget, it will be met.
No, but you're interested, I think, in how many people are opposing this and how...
I'm wondering if the legislature is saying, geez, folks, thanks for your input, but we're not going to do that, or whether they're saying, thank you, we will seriously consider trying to meet that need.
Actually, it is in the proposed budget, but it's passed, if it went.
That's the one that's been frozen for months?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
They had supported it.
That's helpful, Kay, thank you.
Back to the senior centers very briefly. The Tar Heel Legislature, Senior Legislature, requests that the General Assembly maintain the current general purpose funding and increase this funding to a recurring $350,000 to continue to meet the vital needs of North Carolina's growing population of older adults. Also, one of the legislative priorities is to increase funding for Project Care, and this is caregiver alternatives to running on empty. I think fairly recently, we've all come to understand how significant caregivers are in caring for folks, and the pressures and difficulties that they face. So this is an area that would hopefully provide services that would be of benefit to people who are doing caretaking. The Senior Tar Heel Legislature requests that the General Assembly increase funding for Project Care by half a million dollars, and in future years, funding by 10% annually for increased growth to try to keep up. Strengthen and fund North Carolina's Adult Protective Services Program, or APS. APS is a core of services provided to vulnerable and older adults who are at risk of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. By 2025, 89 counties in North Carolina are projected to have more people aged 60 than 17 and under. We are, obviously, as Kay and I have both noted, an aging population, and it isn't going to change. The last item that I'm going to share with you is the staff-to-patient ratios in nursing homes. The Senior Tar Heel Legislature recommends that the General Assembly enact legislation which establishes either a mandatory standard hours per patient daily, or minimum staff-to-patient ratios for direct patient care, including enforcement standards and consequences to ensure quality care in nursing homes in North Carolina, regardless of whether they are a for-profit or a not-for-profit organization. I guess, unless you have some other questions, I would just say, it's obvious, aging is going to mean more demands on our population and on our elected government. Thank you for your support over the years. Any questions?
Anyone have any question?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I'm on the CAC for the Alms-Buzman, for the Spring Arbor and Peak Resources, and actually spent all, or half the day, at both of those facilities today. On the staff-to-patient ratio in the nursing homes, I think that assisted living facilities should also have somewhat similar guidelines set to them. There's definitely a need in those homes to have some guidance as far as staff goes. More and more dementia and Alzheimer's patients are being blended in with the general population in those facilities because the Alzheimer's unit doesn't have the capacity to keep up. And as we all know, dementia or Alzheimer's patient needs a lot more direct care than the rest of the general population. So that might be something y'all might want to consider too, for the legislature to look at.
Thank you. Thank you for that suggestion, and we are...
Thank you for that suggestion, and we are very aware of that. But it's so difficult to, it doesn't require any funding on behalf of the General Assembly, but they're hesitant to put in those kinds of regulations or parameters for the profession. And it took us, I think, six years to get the testing, the drug testing for applicants in long-term care facilities. So, we'll certainly keep that before them and add in the assisted living facilities. That's a very good point, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you so much, Kay.
Sue, thank you all very much for what you do.
It's our pleasure to serve the county and you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item four. This is the approval of the Architectural Contract for the COA, or the amended COA project and amendment to the capital project ordinance, and Dave Clausen will make that presentation.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. Back in October, the board approved a change in the scope of the COA project from 26,000 square feet to 36,500. And at the same time, you were provided a new cost estimate that was prepared by the architect, which is what Dorothy is handing out for me. That included a contract change for the architect, which is the first attachment, which is the amendment to their agreement. It increases that contract by $264,209 to 937, 969, which is what's shown on the cost estimate. I wanted you to note that before the scope changed, the architectural fee was 8.1% of construction, and after, it's 7.3% of construction. So, you get a little economy of scale. The second attachment is the amendment to the capital project ordinance, which is amending the project budget. And it has first, that 264,000 for the architectural contract change, and it also has a $45,000 increase to construction testing, taking that to 150,000, which is on that cost estimate. And then increasing owner cost by 39.5, bringing that total to 80,500, which I noted on the cost es, on the architectural, architects' cost estimate. Then just two things. As we go along with all these projects, the third attachment, I included a budget summary because I was having trouble keeping track of it. We've done it nine times on these six projects since we started. So, we'll have a spreadsheet, and you can go over to the right side and see where we, where you stand every time. And then the final page is a summary that I do for the underwriter and our financial advisor and the LGC and bond council, keeping track of where we are with each of the projects. These numbers are what you saw in the last capital investment fund model. I've added 22,765,000 at the bottom. We have a possible refinancing, or we call it a refunding of existing debt. It's the Series 2012D, the Series 2013, and the Series 2015 that, or part of those debt issuances that work right now. The underwriter ran numbers as of January 7th. It's, if it was standalone right now, I probably wouldn't be bringing it to you to do it, but you get, again, some economies of scale by combining it. We got a debt issue anyway, so we'll carry it and see how the numbers look as we go along. Our rules of thumb are, this is from our financial advisor, is 5% net present value savings right now. We're at 4.81%. Savings of at least 100,000 a year right now. We're at 110 or average of 110. And then negative arbitrage is not more than 33%. Right now, we're at 29.6%. Negative arbitrage, think of it as savings that you're leaving on the table because you can't earn enough interest in the escrow until you can pay off the bonds, or you're not earning as much as you legally could. So, that will also improve as time goes by. But the reason we're including it is your gross savings right now is just over a million dollars, a million and $10,000. So, we thought it would be worthwhile to include it.
Savings of a million dollars, what versus what, Dave, to help us understand?
Existing debt service versus future debt service.
And that's a result of lower interest rates?
Yes, sir.
Or spreading out the payment?
No, no, strictly lower interest rates. We keep, we keep the average years to maturity as close as possible, you know, when you're comparing the new debt to the exist-
Right, so you're not just extending, right?
Right.
And as you had indicated to my email, the blended rate on this refunding is about 2.3%?
Yes, sir.
And if we did not refund, the blended rate on this 22 million or so is higher than the 2.3%?
Yes.
And that reduction of rate is what yields the million dollars of savings?
That's right. That's exactly right. So, what we're asking the board to do is to approve the contract amendment, authorize county manager to execute it, and approve the amendment to the capital project ordinance.
Any questions, Dave? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve the contract amendment and authorize county manager to execute and approve the amendment to the capital project ordinance.
Second. Okay, it's, motion's on the floor by the vice chair, and it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chairman, that brings us to item five on the agenda. On a meeting ago, or two meetings ago, we agreed that we were going to use the UNC School of Government Development Finance Initiative as our consultant for our affordable housing project and our ongoing work and study in that area. In between meetings, they have sent us the contract for us to move forward with that. That contract is in your packet for your review. Dave, do they need to do budget amendments or anything to?
No, that's already been done.
It's already been done. So, we've already done that part, and you simply need to approve this contract. Do you have questions?
Any, any, excuse me. Any questions? Pleasure of the board, then, with, with respects to the School of Government.
Move to approve the service agreement terms with SOGDFI LLC and authorize county manager to execute the final agreement.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item six on the agenda is the, the agenda. Commissioner Ross had some questions about number four. And I've asked Chuck, well, I said our DSS director, and Shula Davies, our DHHS director, to come and answer questions that he might have. So, with your permission, we can pull number four, approve the consent agenda, then come back to it.
You mean number four on the consent? Yeah, absolutely. We can do that. Is it pleasure of the board to do so?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then a motion to approve items one, two, three, and five.
Right. There's a motion by the vice chair to approve items one, two, three, and five. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item four is the Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report. If you will, I'll get Chuck to tell you a little bit about what that is, and then if you all have questions about it, we can go from there.
Good evening, Chuck.
Good evening. You have in front of you the 2019 Community Child Protection Team and Community, or Child Fatality Prevention Team Annual Report. We are required by state statute to provide this to the Board of Commissioners annually. This has kind of morphed over the last several years, and we are now doing one report as opposed to two separate reports. Within Dare County, these, these teams are now operating as one. We've been operating as one team since about 2016. There's about 18 members on the team. They each have individual functions, but a lot of the team members are the same. The Community Child Protection Team is responsible for reviewing any fatalities that are connected with child, with child protective services, any severe cases of child abuse or neglect that might be out in the community that we're currently involved in, or the more complicated cases that would have systematic issues that we don't know where to go, and so we're asking for consultation from the team. The Child Fatality Prevention Team is more oriented towards the health department side, and they look at child fatalities that occur within Dare County to see whether or not there are systematic issues or county issues that could be addressed to prevent those fatalities in the future. The report that is provided to you this evening summarizes basically the three issues that we encountered this year, along with the training opportunity that we had from the state in February of last year, and then also what we'll be looking forward to in 2020 in terms of our project with local rental companies.
I just wanted to say thank you, Shula. Thanks, Chuck, for coming. I, I know it wasn't scheduled, so I'm really grateful that Bobby was able to ask you and you guys could come. That was at my request, so thank you. My, my only comment was, as I was going through it on the consent agenda, I just thought, this feels like we could take a couple minutes, you know, on the topic. Because I read Shula's report every week, and it, it's very, yeah, it's very touching and moving and sometimes disturbing. So, I wanted to ask you about it. I know you guys have done this before, and perhaps I just wasn't focused or missed it, but I wanted to, again, just ask the board kind of hear a little bit more as you're providing it, Chuck. Thank you. On the purpose of the board, the fact that you've got roughly half that attend the meetings four times a year, and I'm not trying to get angry or anything, but how about, why half?
The general statutes require certain individuals to be on, on the board, on each of the boards, and it's just difficult to get all of those participants into a room every quarter. The other, the other thing that we're dealing with is there is no longer a medical examiner here in Dare County. We would have to go get a medical examiner from Greenville, and trying to get somebody from Greenville here once a month or, once a quarter for an hourly meeting is just, it's just not feasible.
Yeah, it seems excessive. I agree. So, we have a medical examiner that never comes, and it's not feasible to get them, but we list them anyway.
Correct. Were required by statute.
I love government.
Don't you love?
I love government. I do.
Don't you?
I do.
So, of course, that's huge, your percentage. When you saw the report, 54%, but if you know you're always going to have one member that's not there, it's adjusting your percentage.
I agree, Shula. That's, again, I'm not attacking. I saw the 54 and thought, gosh, are they not able to get interest? Are people, they don't care? This is a huge issue for our community. Again, you guys are much closer than I. I just get the weekly reports, but it's a big deal.
There is a, the, the individuals that do attend, there is a really good core that's representative of health and social services. The DA's office representative is usually there. The hospital is in the process of replacing their representative.
I'm going to bet you the same eight to 12 people come to all four meetings.
Yes, sir.
How did I know that? My other question for you, it, it said that you all reviewed three cases and identified the following issues. That's fine. Were these cases selected because they were uniquely challenging? Were they at random? Could there have been more cases? I, I wasn't quite sure about that.
The cases that are selected are, these that we report on are currently or at the time are involved with the child welfare system, either in an investigative capacity or in an ongoing case management capacity where we've been working with the family and our next step is, what do we do? Typically, and we're very fortunate, we haven't had any child fatalities to review. Those would be the ones we would choose first. The next steps down would be those, those cases that are very difficult, might have repeat neglect. We've had five, six reports on this family. It's not enough to take them to court. We're missing a piece here. What do we do? Can we get some involvement from the community representatives to see if they have additional ideas? The other opportunity that this gives us, well, our Child Protective Services staff actually select the cases that are going to be reviewed. There might be an, a sex abuse investigation that they're struggling on, trying to connect with resources because they're limited at that time. The three that were chosen here, at least number two is, has been a big one here in Dare County, is being able to find access for the Hispanic community and providing therapists. It's very difficult when you pick up the phone and try to have conversation between three or four people and the, over the telephone to provide counseling services for the Hispanic community. We've talked to Port about it several times. It is about hiring one or two interpreters or one or two, ideally licensed therapists who do speak Spanish for the Hispanic community. And it's just not something that has, has happened yet, but it continues to be an issue.
So, we really cannot offer effective counseling to the Spanish-speaking members of the community right now?
Correct.
And again, not a criticism, just acknowledging that that's a challenge and a fact.
Correct. And that's a systemic issue, whether it's here or in Hatteras. It's, and it's across the state. I mean, there's just limited services, and there's limited individuals who are qualified to do that.
Okay. Well, anyway, I appreciate your indulgence, guys. It just felt like a bigger deal than, and wanted to take a minute if I could, so thank you for that, guys.
No actions required on that.
Yeah, no act.
No, I don't have.
Nope.
No, just that it's presented. Moving forward, would you like us to schedule this annually as an agenda item instead of consent agenda? We're happy to do that, and-
For me, yes. I don't want to impose on a recent-
No, that'd be fun.
Okay.
It'd be fun.
Yeah, simple enough to do. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anytime.
Thanks, you guys. I believe we need to move on this as part of the consent agenda since it was, we voted on one, two, and three and five, correct?
I don't know what your motion would be. I guess-
Motion would be to accept the consent agenda.
Yeah. Item four.
I'm for on the consent.
Yeah, so moved.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by the vice chairman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, that brings us to item seven. That's the board appointments. It's the Dare County Tourism Board. This is one that we held over from the last meeting. It's a representative for the town of Kill Devil Hills. The January 6, 2020 board meeting, the meeting, the appointment of the representative of the town of Kill Devil Hills was tabled until today. Mike Hogan is not eligible for the appointment. The town of Kill Devil Hills submitted the names of Ivy Ingram, John Willie, and Bernard, BJ Mack of Oui, and they recommend Commissioner Ivy Ingram.
Pleasure of the board.
Move to approve Commissioner Ivy Ingram.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve Ms. Ingram. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Can that be your agenda, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to item eight, and that's commissioner's business and county manager's business. Commissioner Tobin, would you mind kicking it off tonight?
This month, we had the Organizational Task Force meeting, and during that meeting, we were informed that the dredge merit should be here sometime mid-February for a month. And then after that, in mid-March, the Currituck will be here through mid-April, and they will be operating 24-hour shifts because the crew off of the Myrdin is, Myrdin's in dry dock, so they'll be available. So, that's pretty good. Also, as far as dredges go, the final plans should be finished this week, and Jensen Maritime has been working on issuing the RFP, and that should be done real soon, too, and be put out to the prospective shipyards. Today, I spent a good portion of the day with Alms Budsmann program for Peak Resources and Spring Arbor. We had our quarterly meeting, and then we went on a tour of both Peak Resources and Spring Arbor. And we went at a pretty odd hour for us. We, we toured those facilities between 2:00 and, well, actually about 2:30 to 4:30. And it was refreshing to see kind of the midday goings-on. There was prayer meetings. There were, they were dancing, they were singing. It was, it was really pretty uplifting, and the staff was in a good mood. Everything was organized. We found nothing wrong with either facility. It's a first, to be honest with you. We almost always find something wrong, and both facilities were hitting on all cylinders today.
Jim?
Yes.
Is Peak full?
No, neither one of them are full.
Okay.
Jim, when did you say Currituck's going to be here? I'm sorry.
The Currituck is going, it's tentatively, the, you know, this is, you all understand. The 15th or 16th of March through- or 16th of March through mid-April.
Great.
And that'll be 24-hour day shifts. That's all I got, thank you.
Jim, you mentioned the plans are pretty close to finalized.
Yes.
Does the task, who approves those before it goes to?
We will, when the plans are sent to us, we will have another task force meeting, which, like we did last time, we have the meeting, we gavel it in, make a motion, go into closed session, we go into closed session, everybody looks at the plans, approve it or not approve it, come back out of closed session. It's really.
But for the most part, it'll take place at that one meeting, and then y'all can get it out to bid.
Yes.
Cool.
Yep.
Good deal.
And the plans, you know, the preliminary plans were approved with some changes. The next one will be pretty easy, because we'll just look, seem, make sure the changes have been.
Got you, great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got several items I wanted to update the board on. The Albemarle Commission held its election of officers at this past week's meeting, and the same officers were re-elected as a slate, Tracy Johnson from Washington as chair, myself as vice chair, and Linda Hoffler from Gates County as secretary. Unfortunately, our newly hired last-year executive director has resigned. Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Melody Wilkins, she was a terrific executive director, and it turns out that she had, was offered a job very near her hometown in the central part of the state, and 10 minutes from where her son just had a new granddaughter, and as a result, she has been drawn home to the granddaughter. So it was a parting on very good terms, we will miss her greatly, and we began today organizing the process to replace her. She was doing a very good job, and unfortunately, we're going to lose her to that decision. I will be attending on January 29th in Herdford, a broadband in rural counties workshop sponsored by the North Carolina Department of Information Technology. So I will report back on what that workshop presents to us and what we learn about availability of funding and infrastructure to expand broadband access throughout northeast North Carolina. I recently sat in on a focus group sponsored by Healthy Carolinians, and we spoke, Kay, about what issues related to healthcare are most important, and the Healthcare Carolinians are doing these focus groups around the county. So there were a group of ladies in the room, I was the only guy there, but that's okay, and they came up with four, what I would consider four critical items. Access to healthcare, that is availability of doctors, availability of specialists, cost of healthcare, navigating insurance, transportation, getting to doctor's appointments, and finally, housing for seniors that are potentially reaching a stage where, as you all were pointing out, there are additional needs for that aging population. Bobby, you were good enough, thank you, to pass along a sort of white paper on the definition of what we provide in terms of county transportation, because a number of comments were made, well, I got to call two days in advance to get transportation. Well, by statute, we are not permitted to operate as a government-funded competitive entity to taxi companies and Uber and Lyft, so there are very, very rigid restrictions we must follow as we provide this service, which is very affordable, it's $3 each way anywhere in the county, it's all at $6 for a round trip, so it's very affordable to those that need it, and we make every accommodation we can to meet the needs of those requesting Unfortunately, this is not Dare County, but as part of the Albemarle Commission, there is a very large prison jail facility in Terrell County that's going to be closing. And I just call it out because it's going to have a very, very tough effect on those residents in Terrell County with regard to the economic impact on the county. Commissioner Jordan Davis sits on the board with me, and they are looking at some very, very difficult times in Terrell County. So I just call that out, so we're sort of sensitive and aware to that impact. I've followed up with Representative Hennig and Senator Steinberg as well regarding the possibility of a reversal of decision to close and reopen, and it doesn't seem very This is kind of humorous. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has been running into some budget problems, as we're all aware. And recently, I had a call from a citizen asking, hey, what can you guys do about getting the resurfacing of the bypass from the bridge down to Wellbone Junction? So I, again, followed up with our North, our Albemarle Commission Planning Director, Angela Welsh, and I was advised that there will be resurfacing of the highway from the bridge to Walmart. So we will have about three-quarters of a mile, maybe, of resurfacing, as opposed to the 15 miles that we thought would be taking place.
It's a start.
It's a start. It's a start, that's right, that's right. And finally, I just wanted to echo what the chairman said in his opening remarks last week. The Board of Education meeting was very, very moving. The awards, the children, the teachers, the recognition, the enthusiasm was, they were all terrific. And again, there's not many people here, I would have encouraged anyone that are open to the public to attend one, to see just how your Dare County school system is handling our kids and their education. It's very, very reassuring. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say personally to you, thank you for your State of the County address. That was very professionally done, very enlightening, and very entertaining because of your public speaking capabilities.
Thank you.
And I did want to definitely congratulate you on that. Our Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we recently had a meeting last week, and the council's doing great. We are looking for additional avenues to help our children here in Dare County, and if you know of any programs that could benefit from, and fall in line with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we urge you to come forward, and we're looking for possibly programs that we can help fund. So if you have any need for, or an idea of a juvenile program that needs funding that would fit within our guidelines, please bring it forward. The Martin Luther King Jr. celebration was excellent. It was standing room only. If you could not feel the love, compassion for your fellow man in that room, I feel sorry for your soul, because it was just an outstanding event. Everybody there was enlightened by the, not only music, but also the message that was given. It was just a wonderful day. The Southern Atlantic Council for the Fisheries, the Spanish Mackerel Public Comment is now until February 7th. I urge everybody to check on their website and do a public comment. They are looking at a reduction of 2,000 pounds just for the Northern Zone, which is us. The Southern and Central Zones would stay the same. So I would definitely urge the, urge you to do a public comment on their website. Also, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, the shrimp scoping ends tonight. Your public comments are in tonight at 12 o'clock. If you haven't done so, I urge you drastically to get on their website and do a public comment on the shrimping. If you haven't noticed, shrimping right now is through the roof. They are pulling in massive amounts of shrimp. And if you'll look and notice, because one of the things about the shrimping amendments that are coming up are asking for more reductions in buy-catch measures. The state of North Carolina is leading the nation and the world in buy-catch reduction in our shrimping industry. And if you watch their videos, when they're off, when they pull the nets out of the water and they open them up, and it all comes out, comes out onto the boat, I watched three different videos of that same thing, and you could count on one hand the number of fish that were in that net as opposed to shrimp. And what I mean, when they, when I mean they were opening those nets up, the whole back of the boat was filled with nothing but shrimp. So if we are having a problem with buy-catch, I would dare anybody to tell me where it is. It's just that problem. Also, the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission, on February 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30, at their office in Moorhead, they're also looking for a possible reallocation of the bluefish, so keep that on your agendas too. And that pretty much does it for fisheries right now. And I'm going to end on a positive note. One of our favorite things that we have not had in the last couple of night meetings, but I assure you of this one, we have from the SBCA, the pet of the week, which is a seven-month-old black kitten, Toby, and she loves everyone.
Our pet of the week for this week is Toby. Toby is an adorable seven-month-old black kitty. This little guy was surrendered when his previous family could no longer care for him. Toby loves everyone, and he will let you know when he wants attention and his breakfast. To adopt Toby or foster one of our other animals, you can come and visit us Monday through Saturday at our shelter located in Manio. Mark your calendars, we have another rabies clinic coming up in a few weeks here at our shelter in Manio. This rabies clinic will be held February 10th through the 14th from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. each day. Remember to have your dogs on leashes and your cats in carriers when you come. For more information, visit our website at www-obxspca.org, or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please, run down to our shelter, grab Toby, adopt him, and take him home with you, and you can share breakfast with him and play with him all day long.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Blasphemer, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Coors to Bateman.
Yes, sir. I too was at the Martin Luther King Celebration, and as Steve said, one of the biggest, and things I liked the most about it was the music. These guys rocked out. They had these three guys from, I guess, Weldon, North Carolina?
Yeah.
I meant, it was like, they were boogying all over the stage, and it was just really a great time there. First flight, they're on, they had a guy that's in the center, I forgot what the young guy's name was, he had a voice that was unbelievable, and it just made your skin, this kind of hair stand up on your arm. And then the three to five ladies from.
Echoes of her.
Yeah, they did a really, really good job. It was a good day. The speaker is a speaker from the Source Church.
Okay.
Very good, very motivational, and it just, it made you feel like that, it'd give you a positive thing to be from Dare County, but also a positive thing to be an American. And me growing up, as I did back during the time when Martin Luther King was alive, and also doing his march and so forth, it made me be proud of where we are today with that, and so, thank you. Also, we have recovery court this week, I'm really pleased the way that's going. It's a positive thing for the community, we've got some positive results. We had one individual who, you know, he'd been wearing an anchor monitor, and then he reached the stage, they took it off. You know, he's going, taking the baby steps in his recovery, and in recovery, you have to look at the baby steps, but that one for him was really big. The judge congratulated him and said, told him he was doing a great job, and you could see the guy beaming from ear to ear as he walked out the door. And this was someone who, six months ago, was really, really at a bad space in his life. And so I feel that this board's actions and allowing this recovery court to go where it has, and the future of what it's going to be, is going to be a positive thing for the county, so.
What day is it?
Still got.
What day is it?
It's, there are different times, because the judge's schedule's so crazy. I'll tell you when the next one is, though, and you can, let me see here. 13th of February is the next one.
When is one this week?
It was last week, it was last week.
I thought you said it was this week.
We don't have one this week.
Oh, I thought that's what you said, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, no, no, it was last week when we had it. Anyway, just a great thing for the county, and I'm pleased to be able to be a part of it, so thank y'all.
Thank you, Ervin. It's good to see that our efforts have paid off in funding, and we're seeing some results from that.
And you got a lot of kiddos from your presentation and your getup and so forth. I got quite a bit of calls from people about Bob Woodard and his getup. What do y'all know, now you were not there or not, Bob dressed up as a, in the 150-year outfit, and it was hot, I bet.
It was.
They didn't have HVAC back then.
Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir, not a whole lot to report. There's a lot of construction going on down in Hatteras, really tickled to death, a lot of people working in the trades. One of the charity relief groups down there is going to be sending 60 people to Ocracoke. We were able to get Hatteras Island back on board fairly quickly, but they're still suffering down in Ocracoke, so with a lot of the resources, manpower, and supplies that we have, we're going to be sending some people down there to help them, help our neighbors get up and rolling. Property management companies are reporting, you got four down there that handle the great majority of reservations, and one of them is up as much as 19%. So we're looking at a very, very strong 2020. And I'm encouraged with, even though we don't have the official numbers yet, but I think 2019's going to have, turned out to be a very good year, and we were able to handle Dorian as well as could be expected. Have a state meeting, I sit on the Code Officials Qualifications Board, we've approved live remotes, which will really help the municipalities, the Charles, Greensburs, and stuff with the loads they're carrying, but it could have some ramifications here to save some efficiency. We run a very good planning department, we get a lot done, we do more with less, so I think these live remotes may help us be even more efficient. We have a good, we have good enforcement people in Dare County, and they're firm, but they're fair. And I see them down in Hatteras a lot, I get a lot of calls that I'm not being treated fairly, and after we have the conversation, it turns out, they've been treated very fairly. But we are busy, glad to see with all the permits, we all, this board got its permit report, and it's nice to see that we've got a lot of construction going on. I'm just tickled to death. I like being busy, I like seeing busy people. Plenty of money to be made, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner, and that's good to hear, especially this time of year, it's great. Just a couple more comments before I go to the County Manager. Last Wednesday, the State of the County, I'm just the presenter, folks. What sits to my left and my right is the catalyst of a concerted effort on a bipartisan board in Dare County. Our nation and our state would learn a huge lesson if they'd tune in to our board meetings and listen to my fellow commissioners in this board, and what we've accomplished over recent years. We all, even outside of this meeting and in this meeting, have the utmost respect for one another. I could not be more honored to serve on a board with you gentlemen, and I said that last Wednesday, I pointed that out specifically to each one of you, even though you weren't there, Vice Chairman, you had a prior commitment.
Thanks, sir.
Your, what you have done for the opioid, and what you've done in that task force, and all the other things that you've done are phenomenal. Each one of you give more than 100% of your time, every single. Each one of you give more than 100% of your time every single day of your life representing this county, and I'm proud to say that what this board does, we do in the best interest of Dare County citizens. I could not be more proud to be a member of this board. And also, this is what our nation is founded on, is working together in a bipartisan way. And what you're seeing today on TV and in the state and the federal government sickens me to my stomach. I thank you for what you do, and I'm proud to be a part of this board with each and every one of you. And also, I'd like to thank Dorothy and her staff. We worked on this for about 45 days. Takes me a while to get it right, guys, to study it. I'm just...I'm just the spokesperson to share with the county what successes we have done as a unified bipartisan board. But I could not be more proud of the accomplishments in 2019, and we have quite a few facing us in 2020. And I know that each and every one of you will step up to the plate like you've always done. But Dorothy, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sarah and Beth, they're not here this evening, but I know they're tired of my phone calls and tired of my nitpicking because I sat down with them numerous times and went through the PowerPoint and changed this and changed that and rearranged this and rearranged that. I was just trying to get it in a sequence that I was comfortable with. But thank you for what you do. God bless you. County Manager.
Yes, sir. Real briefly, Commissioner Ross talked about the transportation white paper I gave him. I just wanted to give Sharon Flat credit for that. She prepared that for me. So, again, she did a very fine job and spent some time to get you that information.
Yes, she did. Thank you. Absolutely.
The second thing is, with our Manio dredging project, we've got our soil tests, and there's some, I don't know what, in the soil, but we need to test the soil to make sure it's compatible for whatever spoil site we put it on. And depending on what those tests show will depend on where we can put it. The test ranges from somewhere around $11,000 to as much as $40,000, depending on how many levels of testing we have to go at each step. So, what I'm looking for tonight is authorization to enter into this agreement with APTM to spend up to $40,251 for that testing and to do that incrementally as necessitated by each test.
Pleasure, the board?
What determines, Bobby, that range? Is it they test it, and then they see something, they have to test it another level and then another level?
There's two...that's one of the things, and then where we ultimately choose to put it. If we want to put it in a landfill and we can, then there's one level. If you're gonna put it on an open field where people would come in contact with it, then there's another level. And as we work through where that spoil is gonna ultimately go, may well determine what level of testing is required, again, to meet conditions at whatever that spoil site is.
Gotcha. Does that include the temporary site that it's placed on or the ultimate site that it's placed on?
Well, it could be both, but presumably, for the temporary site, you're gonna remove it, and you're...if you're leasing the land, you're gonna be required to restore the land back to its original condition. So, presumably, you wouldn't have any of the spoil left once you put it in its ultimate destination.
This one of those things don't sound like it's got a whole lot of choice.
Well, we don't...and again, we gotta make it safe. Whatever we do, we don't really have a choice about that.
But also, just keep in mind, this is a foundational component of our dredge spoil management plan as well. Does this get funded out of the...
This is a project cost. This comes out of the project.
This comes out of the project. So, it's already funded.
Gotcha.
Gotcha. I move. Okay, the Commissioner Couch has made a motion to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's all? Thank you, County Manager. Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester?
Our 150th celebration, the chairman officially kicked off that 150th celebration. I think February 3rd, 1870, if I'm correct. I didn't write it down, but I think that's the date when the legislature established there. And by the time we reach that date in 2020, we'll have a website up and running that will list...well, it'll celebrate our anniversary and list 150 ways to celebrate. And we've worked with IT, with Kristen and GIS, to develop a timeline so that you can scroll through and look at different events over the past 150 years that have occurred. And then we'll also talk about an event at Allen Farm for the first week in May, a family-friendly event where we can celebrate the way life was here in Dare County 150 years ago. So, we do have some things planned.
I'm gonna request them all to dress in 1870 attire.
I'm gonna request AC.
And Commissioner Couch is...we're gonna do storytelling on the porch, and Commissioner Couch will be one of the storytellers that day. But we've got some really nice things planned. I'd hope to have it launched by the time we did the chairman's State of the County, but it's taken us a little longer, but by the 1st of February, we will have that. And there are some different publications that are gonna do features on our anniversary, and we're working on some other things. So, just stay tuned because it is exciting and we are...
It'll be fun.
Yes. We're gonna have...we're gonna...we have so much history here, and we're the land of beginnings, and it's really nice to be able to celebrate all that we have here, and something for everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dorothy. Finance Director, David, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Nothing else.
All right. Anyone else? That being said, do we have a motion to adjourn until 9:00 a.m. on February 4th?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner House, and it's been seconded by...by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes and? Motion carries unanimous.